Okay. Called the special council meeting to order. Roll call.
Henry Molina.
Tom Marsley.
Kevin Tripplett.
Wendy Manson.
Justin Kass.
Jeff Felter.
William McCormick.
Fred Johnson. Ben and Michelle are absent.
Yeah, I haven't heard from Ben.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, now on business here before we get started, I'd like to have A, E, G, and H removed to the regular council.
You can't. You can't change the agenda for a special meeting.
Okay. Because see, this should have been a workshop, not a council meeting and all.
No, but we had a request to make it a special city council meeting because Justin needs to move forward with the wellhouse project.
Well, then we could have made it seven o'clock so that if there's any taxpayers that would like to hear what's going on, you know, three o'clock in the afternoon.
We made it at 3:30 because the workshops are on the mayor's appointments as 3:30. And so...
But this isn't a workshop, no?
No, originally it was supposed to be, but we can't change the...I just talked to the city attorney today, when you have the agenda set, you have to discuss what's on the agenda. So the only thing that I need to have a motion on is we cannot have a purchase of property, we have to put that towards the end of the meeting because we have to close the meeting for that. So I need someone to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item E to H and item H to E.
I'll make a motion to move E to H and H to E and then close the meeting for the discussion on purchase of property. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero.
You want to take the first one?
Sure. So you guys have a memo in your packet?
Yeah. I do.
Let's go through that. So June 20th, we received, opened and received bids for the well and wellhouse project. We had a separate bid pack for the construction and drilling of the well itself, which also includes abandoning wells four and five, um, not four and five, abandoning wells one, two, and three.
Please.
I thought maybe you wanted to hang on to one, two, and three a little under.
No.
Just kidding. Abandoning wells one, two, and three would be part of the well contract. And then the demo of the wellhouse number one is actually in the wellhouse project. So there's two separate bids. So the bid for the construction of the, of well number six, there was only one bid received, which was from Trout Wells of Wake Park in the amount of $184,310. And then the second portion of, or the second bid was the construction of the wellhouse improvement, so that's the, we're calling wellhouse number three on the Apple site that was recently purchased by the city. And then abandoning or removing wellhouse number one and burying that piping that's currently inside that wellhouse, needs to be buried underground. That goal is actually, will remain a service to the fire station because that's how the fire station fills their trucks up there. There's a, on the east side of the building, there's a service that comes in there. And then also that included in that bid is all the SCADA improvements that's required as part of the project. They essentially rerouted the communication systems for everything to eliminate, right now, everything kind of is fed through the water tower number one, multi-legged, and then the wellhouse number one site. So there's some work that we need to do on the electronics side of things to get everything to talk back and forth and then point the new well and wellhouse to that site. So that's all part of the bid as well. And we received three bids on that. The whole bidder is Rice Lake Construction out of Deerwood, Minnesota. And that is just Schedule A, Schedule B, and allowance. There's a $90,000 allowance that's included in the project. Essentially, that's kind of a built-in per se contingency. So if there's any unforeseen things that occur during the project, unknown circumstances, for instance, when we're digging up to bury the pipes at the existing wellhouse site, if there's something unknown or unforeseen there, those items would be covered in that. Only the amount that, you know, that amount wouldn't be paid out to the contractor unless there's a specific thing that's approved by chain order by the city council for that amount.
On the SCADA pieces, is that all telemetry or is that buried wire?
Uh, that is all telemetry back and forth. There is some burying of wire. We just need to get a new power source for it. And so we're going to go into the, in the park shelter there and utilize that for power. There's a little bit of buried wire there.
Sure be stinky.
Yeah, yeah. And then, let's see, Schedule B is just, yeah, Schedule A, Schedule A is the main part of it. Schedule B is the, just a few unit price things that based on how much top soil and, you know, if we, basically soil corrections underneath the, underneath the wellhouse building itself. Obviously, we don't know exactly how much that'll be. We did do a boring, got pretty good results, but that can vary a little bit. So, whole cost of that then was $912,920. So there, I just gave you a summary of the total project cost then. The well number six construction is $184,310. The wellhouse number three construction, which includes the demo wellhouse one and associated work in the SCADA modifications, $912,920. And then the, all the environmental reviews, the engineering, construction administration, inspection, testing, which includes all the, all the costs that have been spent to date from when this project was originally started back on the other site that we had originally designed for and did test wells and stuff like that for. That 220,000 includes all of those costs that have been spent to date plus costs that would be coming up for doing the construction administration and testing and inspection portion of it. And the grant, not the grant, but the PFA financing, there's a special, you know, there's special wage interviews that we need to do, compliance checks and things of that nature since it is a state funded, essentially state funding, not state funded, but state funding that's on the project. In exchange, the city gets very low interest on that. We don't know exactly what the interest rate will be yet, so that provided the city moves forward with it and awards the project, then we would move forward with, with closing on those loan documents and working with our bond council, with the city's bond council, Mary Apple, is who you guys would continue to use on that.
Has any of the paperwork been supplied yet to...
Yeah, so we've done a lot of paperwork. The, the project has been certified by the Minnesota Department of Health, which is one of the requirements of PFA financing, so that's all done and complete. Department of Health has signed off on everything. And then we've submitted some preliminary paperwork to the Public Facilities Authority and all that. It's just a matter of finalizing a few documents and closing on the loan. Environmental reviews have all been completed and approved by PFA, so that portion of it is all done as well.
But we don't know how much would be funded from the government or whatever.
There would be no grants, there would be no grants on it.
No grants?
No, no grants. Unfortunately, the median household income in Montrose is too high. It's, it's higher than the statewide ever, so they don't qualify for, for grant money. It's, it's between your median household income and the other thing that puts you into the grant category is your water rates in comparison to what they say is the affordability of that. So it's usually one point, I think it's like 1.4% of your median household income is what they consider being affordable. And if you're over that amount for your water rates, then, then you can become eligible for potential grants. So it's kind of a good and bad thing. It means that your, your rates are, it means your rates in comparison to some other communities are lower, but on the, on the bad news, it doesn't put you in the grant category.
Have you, have you worked with both the companies that you're recommending here for these?
Yeah, we've worked with both of them a lot. Trout is a very good company. I, you know, why we only got one bid on the well, kind of perplexed me a little bit, but Trout is pretty hungry at this kind of, at this kind of work and they've been bidding up pretty competitively. So I think it sounds like a lot of contractors have just kind of not, not went up against them. They did the test drilling for both of these wells. They're good to work with. So, you know, once we do the, actually do the drilling of the actual well, full size and put the full size pump down there, it's kind of our last check to see what we can get exactly for capacity. You get a preliminary analysis based on the test pumping we have done with the test well. But then there's always an opportunity to potentially modify your screen sizes and your, and your pump sizes a little bit to maybe even get more capacity out of the well. They're, they're just really good to work with, all that stuff. And that's part of that $90,000 per se contingency as well. If we want to upgrade our, our pump to bigger horsepower so we can get more gallons per minute, obviously want to maximize that as much as we can.
How deep is the well going to be?
Uh, the well is right around the 200, it's in the 200-foot mark. I do not print that off right now, but it's in that vicinity. It's close to, close to similar to what the other wells are. I don't know if you remember offhand, well, well...
Two hundred and something.
Yeah.
Going to be one motion or two different motions? Okay, well, I will make a motion to go with Trout Companies for their bid on the well number six project.
I'll second.
And then just to clarify that, contingent upon the final execution of PFA financing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero. Okay, and I'll make a motion to go with Rice Lake Construction Group for the wellhouse improvement project contingent upon PFA financing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When are they, when is that expected, projected to start?
Rice Lake wants to get going right away. They want to get, I know they're working down in Buffalo on a project, so I'm guessing that that's part of the reason they want to get going because they're close by right now on the project. So they, they asked when it was going to be awarded, so that was the other reason, trying to get it, get it going and sooner the better. Yep.
As long as they're next door, might as well just come.
Yep, so we're, we're done probably sometime in August here. Your contract's going right away and obviously can't get started until we get that assurance of the PFA financing.
Other than being, like shutting down the road over there when they're hauling stuff in and out or...
Um, there shouldn't be other than maybe just a short-term, you know, for equipment.
Truck, trucking.
One night kind of thing, yeah.
But we're not digging in the road, there's supposedly a stub on the north side of the road, so.
There's not going to be any disruption of service for anything?
Water, you mean?
Water.
Uh, there will be a disruption on the fire station for that service there when we, when we dig that in, so we'll need to coordinate that with you guys. I'm sure you got other ways that you could fill without that.
Yeah, if you find a hydrant or something, that would be pretty tough or something.
As long as you know about it.
Yeah, that's, that would be my concern.
Yeah.
Draw, that's where the city burns down. How long would that take, probably there?
It'd probably be a day. Well, then it, yeah, it'd be a day for the work and then if we pressure test, I don't, we won't pressure test it though, because it's in the middle of an old line, so.
It'd be just a day, I believe.
Yep.
That's fine, that works.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, so this kind of got brought around after a discussion Wendy and I kind of had, we realize it's been quite a while since we've had just some discussion about emergency management and what it would look like here in the city of Montrose if something were to happen. So we requested to get everybody back up to par on ICS training, which I think pretty much everybody has and still.
Except for like Wayne and myself and Danny, we've all done it before, so we'll just get you copies of ours rather than us wasting another full day doing it.
Sure.
Because we've already done them all.
I did mine in Winston, but they can't find my certificates. And you said that that was a long time ago, so I should redo it again.
Yeah, if you can't find it. And that's something that we'll have to discuss too is, do we want to require this? And this can be at a different meeting, obviously, but do we want to require this to be done every four years or do we just want to have tabletop once a year? Kind of just as some continuing education and stuff, just so we're all kind of on the same line of what we want to do so that we're all semi-knowledgeable of what needs to happen.
I think it's better to do a tabletop or some kind of, or, you know, anything like that where, because hands-on is always much more, it's a better training than sitting looking at the computer.
And if something were majorly changed in that, I'd take these every three years or so, so I would catch it and, you know, have something new.
Those bring us question, how often do things change in there?
Um, quite a bit, actually.
Really?
Yeah, back in 2001-ish, 2006, actually. It started out in a system called NIMs, Minnesota Incident Management System. That got abandoned after about a year when the federal government decided, oh, we need something like this too. And then came, here came FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security, which then created what we have here today, so. So back in, just kind of a little overview, back in 2015, the fire department took back the role of emergency management. Prior to that, it would be just a standalone person who would do it. Reason the fire department took it back is we use it every day. Whoever the city were to hire as emergency manager would have to train with the fire department constantly and be on the same page with us anyways. And we already have all the resources, whereas that new person would have to network and get all those new resources, which is quite extensive to get those resources and stuff. So we felt that it would be a better fit to just house it in the fire department. And we'll discuss how things will look if things got really busy for us and this kind of things happened. Just kind of some things to ponder where emergency management might be used. The obvious ones are storms, tornado runs through town, yep, that's going to happen. Gas pop, gas or power outages, that's the one that we've had in the city in recent times. I don't know what we've...
The last two years, something like that's happened, I think.
Pretty much. I think that's really the only time that we've had the incident management activated, and it was very low-scale incident management at that point as well. So it wasn't huge, it wasn't encompassing, we didn't have any financial losses, anything like that. Some things that we don't think about all the time is if there was an active threat incident somewhere in the city of Montrose or in one of our neighboring jurisdictions, we're going to get activated. Our emergency management system will, let's say there's an active shooter in Delano, I believe one of their evacuation points somewhere over in this general vicinity. So we're going to become involved in that. So anything in a neighboring jurisdiction that might spill over, we could get activated. Train incidents, more vehicle incidents, so like if, the train incidents, they really keyed on that the last, over the last few years, but the chances of a train incident happening are very low. The ones that we have to worry about is Highway 12, crap that's going back and forth on Highway 12, more trailer, truck accidents happen than train accidents.
There's material.
Correct. So that would be our biggest concern. Large-scale events, example, Montrose days, we do have incident management type thing in place if it were to happen. Large-scale emergencies, airplane crash, for example, or if we had like five or six house fires that started all at once or they just kind of grew, we're going to need more resources, we're going to have equipment that's going to break, we're going to need to get things paid and everything like that, so. And then any type of thing that might require evacuation. So with a lot of these, there's different stages in them. A lot of them are just real small stage things that we're just going to take care of on the fire department, we're not going to open up to anything else. As that situation grows, now we might need to activate our EOC and expand it to a point, but it might not be a full-scale thing. I might only need Deb here and Wayne here and Wendy here because I need Wayne's help with the guys, I need Deb's help with the administration, and I need money, essentially. As far as money goes, maybe you can speak a little bit to this, but if we had a large-scale incident, I think we're just going to pay the bills and then deal with it accordingly afterwards, I would assume.
Yeah.
Kind of as an emergency buying power if it were to come into play. For example, I need 50 porta-potties for something, we're just going to order up the porta-potties and deal with it accordingly later.
Wendy, you have gone to training like Wadena, the city of Wadena, that's exactly what they talked about. It's, you need to just get everything paid for and then reimburse later because you're not trying to wait.
No, no. So that's something to always kind of keep in the back of your mind, something like that were to happen, we're not going to necessarily be asking for approvals, but there's going to be enough players and enough people at the table when these decisions are made that is going to be, it's not going to be me saying, oh, I just want to buy 60 candy bars. Somebody's going to be like, no, pay for that out of your own pocket. You know, it's going to be stuff like water, generators, heavy equipment, things like that, that's going to be necessary to mitigate this issue. Then just, I'm going to go over some things to consider, kind of, and I think that's pretty much all I got here for today for the most part. Terminology is one. So in ICS, it talked a lot about common terminology. We always used to use 10 codes for everything. So for example, around here, 1021 means that I need to make a phone call. In New York, you say 1021, that means we're in progress. So if we had resources coming in from another agency that uses a different 10 code, now we have issues because I'm saying this and they're saying that. In the fire service, where this came up is tankers and tenders. If we were out at a grass fire and I say I need more tankers out here, they're going to start sending airplanes to me. Because a tanker is an airplane that dumps water. Tenders are ground units that carry water. So they kind of started getting a lot of that stuff. So it's just using common language and stuff, don't use... So as you went through the classes too, you'll realize there were tons of acronyms. Don't use acronyms because those are just as bad. But they have to use their acronyms, so. Information dissemination, that's probably one of the biggest issues when it comes to it. When we had our gas outage, it actually worked very, very well because the city, the county, the city of Waverly, all the people that were involved allowed everything to be disseminated through one Facebook account. So Kirby wasn't putting stuff on his Facebook account, Deb wasn't putting stuff on her Facebook account, I was putting it on mine and then Kirby would share mine, Deb would share mine, the city of Montrose would share mine. And I would always use the fire department more at that point. So it's kind of keeping it off of your personal Facebook accounts or personal social media accounts and making sure that all the information that's being shared is consistent amongst all the partners that are involved.
And that way they know where it's coming from then too, right?
Correct.
It's not just, well, hopefully this is true.
Right, and then also, okay, this happened, well, I know Kirby was, you know, disseminating it at one point in time, but who's actually going to give the final, hey, we're all clear, hey, you missed that one, well, it's right on my thing, a lot of my guys have access to this and it can be disseminated right from that point, so. The information part is probably the biggest issue that we would ever face, is just getting information out and getting information back in and then disseminating answers. So on a lot of the incidents, you'll see people asking questions on Facebook, I'll never answer usually because that's, sometimes people are just going to poke the bear and try and get a response that...
Things explode in them.
Yeah, so a lot of times, yeah, you can comment all you want, I don't really care unless it's something that's, oh crap, yeah, I may have worded that a little bit weird, but I'll clarify type thing. But that's where a lot of the issues come into play in these larger scale events is how are we getting information out to the public, where's it coming from, who's it coming from, and everything along those lines.
It's, so other than Facebook, sorry Tom.
That's right.
What, you asked the same question. What is our big, like, alert system for everybody in town if it's not Facebook? If there was something like a, like a bomb threat or multiple bomb threats or something like that, then how are we getting information to everybody without using Facebook?
So the county has a system called Everbridge. I haven't disseminated this to the city much because it changed from Code Red to Everbridge within the last six to eight months or so. So they were working something that can't sell. What Everbridge is, is it's a reverse 911 system, so they can basically on map draw a circle around where they want to call, anybody who's in that circle will get that phone call, as long as you're registered with Everbridge system. I'm going to look into it and talk with the county emergency manager a little bit more and see if all the plugs have been worked out and stuff, and I'll present that at a county meeting here in the upcoming future. That would be where official notification type things would be sent out. However, beyond that, we kind of rely on the Facebook thing because that actually does hit a lot, a lot of people. So, and that's something that, you know, we're always striving for is, you know, like fire department's Facebook account because that's where emergency notifications may possibly come from. Next thing is restitution and finance section. We kind of already touched on that. It's pretty much all going to be Wendy, as long as it's a local thing. If it gets beyond that, Wendy's going to be tagged up with the county or the state or the feds or something like that to make sure paperwork's and everything is in order so we get money that could potentially come back to us. Sometimes there is going to be a loss that we're just going to have to chew, and that's, you know, unfortunately, how emergency situations happen. Thankfully, we've been very blessed over the many years here where we haven't had any of that stuff happen, so.
Good, as long as we're, we kind of skipped over this one thing in communication. You know, I get, I get the FEMA alerts, right? Now, if there's an incident in town, FEMA, is FEMA notified? They're not?
Um, they may be, or they may be at some point in time. So everything starts out the smallest possible unit that it can happen. So locally, I'm not calling the feds unless we get out of control. Actually, I'm never going to call the feds, I don't want to deal with them. So it starts here. If I start getting overwhelmed or we all start getting overwhelmed, then we get the county involved, or the county might involve themselves already because they have sheriff's office and all these other resources. From there, if the county starts getting overwhelmed, then they call the state. From there, they call the feds. The chances of a fed incident happening here, pretty low. The one exception would be a train incident because the feds are going to come in, in a heartbeat.
You sound like a train spilled in town kind of thing?
Yeah, a major spill, like ten big fleet cars going over with god knows what. That's where the feds are just going to activate themselves at that point because the feds control railways.
Can you get notifications on what type of stuff the rail system is hauling through town?
I have an app on my phone that I can, every car has a license plate on it.
Yep.
And I do this sometimes when I'm stuck behind a train at work or wherever, I'll pull up a license plate of a train that goes by and I, it'll show me if it's loaded, how much it's loaded with, what it's loaded with, how many cars are in that train, what number that car was, so.
Okay.
In order to get that though, you have to have credentials to get it and stuff like that.
Understood, understood.
We don't give it to all the fire department members or anything like that, it's something pretty simple where, hey, you're there and you're on scene, hey, this car is leaking, here's the license number. I just plug it into my phone.
Oh crap.
Yeah, I'll just get things.
Because I, I know that was one thing that Matt, you know, years ago, said that he was going to talk to them about, see if he can get, you know, knowing that, okay, that they're basically just hauling lumber through here or coal or scrap iron, you know, but then get to understanding, okay, are they hauling crude, crude oil through here or other, you know, types of chemicals that may be hazardous?
And we can get, and if we ever did a, a full-scale tabletop type thing, I can get a thing that shows how much of each product was traveled through the, our area in a 12-month period or something like that. It's just a lot of crude oil, a lot of boxcars, essentially.
Yep.
And then there's the few little ones that are like, oh, thankfully, but that, we don't have any control over them.
Yeah, you don't have any control what goes, you know, none.
So the, back to the restitution and finance stuff, again, that's going to be, that's not going to be at the exact time necessarily. A lot of that's going to be after the fact, that's going to have to just work itself out eventually. And if we ever were to have some kind of incident, I guess probably be prepared for a lot of special council meetings in relatively quick fashion, I would assume, an emergency council meeting or however we would draft those up and stuff, so. Again, hopefully this never happens, but better to be prepared than how would we do anything, so. Next thing is discussion on unified command and who's in charge. So unified command is taking somebody from all the different entities that are involved and putting them in one room to make the decisions. Who's in charge, that's sometimes some headbutting stuff that happens. If you're on Highway 12 and there's a car accident, state patrol's going to come out there and tell us where to charge. Well, fire department would be like, no, as long as we're here, we're in charge because we have a job to do, then we'll give it to you and go away. There's been, not around here, but there's been firefighters arrested for getting head-to-head with cops and stuff like that on a scene like that, usually doesn't bode too well for the cops for the most part, so. Thankfully, we have a very good working relationship with our local law enforcement partners and the state patrol here, where, you know, if we tell the state patrol, hey, we have to shut this down, they're going to be like, okay, whatever, and then we'll just deal with it accordingly. So unified command is taking somebody from law enforcement, somebody from the fire department, if there's any private entities involved, getting them all into one room and figuring out what we have to do to get things fixed. Mutual aid assistance, so it used to be where we had to have mutual aid agreements with Delano, Waverly, all these different places, or else we couldn't call them because we could potentially be filled. That's no longer really valid anymore because the state has a statewide mutual aid assistance pact. So if Wayne needs help with dump trucks, loaders, things like that, he can call Waverly even if we don't have a mutual aid agreement and they can send him over. even if we don't have a mutual aid agreement, and they can send him over, and therefore they can be reimbursed by the state if it becomes to that level. So the whole thing of having hundreds of documents for mutual aid stuff is a thing of the past. If we need something, we'll just get it somehow, some way. With that also kinda comes what's called the Minnesota State Duty Officer. If we need any type of resources whatsoever, they can get it for us. May not be free, but we can get them. They are the ones who get us bomb squads, military, civil air patrols, all this kinda stuff that I don't have direct contact for. So basically, it's a one, one-stop shop answering point for, hey, I have this incident going on, this is what I need, can you help me out? Yep. So that's sometimes where the state gets activated from a local level, sometimes we'll skip the county level at a point. Accountability is a big thing with ICS. So basically what that kinda entails is freelancing. We don't want freelancing to happen, so you always wanna check in with whoever, division chief or section chief and stuff like that, or the incident commander, hey, we're here, what do you need us to do? Not just, oh, I'm gonna go start cutting limbs on this little side street where, I'm careful of the side street, I need to get the major arteries fixed first. Because in the incident command or unified command areas where the strategic and tactical planning starts happening and operations start getting taken care of, and we wanna do things in a systematic order so that we get things repaired in systematic order. So accountability is a really big thing, plus that's also where we track our people and our equipment and everything like that, so later we can be like, here Wendy, have fun. So things can get reimbursed, paid, and we can make sure that everybody goes home safe. We'll also track hours and things like that so people aren't out working for, you know, twenty-eight, thirty hours in a stint necessarily, so. Logistics is another big thing that tends to happen, and again, a lot of that comes through the Minnesota State Duty Officer or just mutual aid partners. Examples are porta-potties, generators, water, manpower, equipment, evacuation type things. Those are different logistics that we might need to get into our jurisdiction for whatever might be happening. Documentation is a big part of ICS. We gotta document everything we do because there has to be an after-action report that's completed, technically even in a really small incidence. If you ever want funding, you have to do a, there has to be about seven or eight different reports that need to be completed so that they can show that, yes, there was a cause for this incident, yes, there was an incident that actually did take place, yes, they mitigated the incident, and here's the finance restitution piece, and then we get paid up for it. Planning and preparation, this should happen all the time. Should always kinda be thinking, okay, if this happened here, what are we gonna do? What's our response gonna look like? In my line of work, I'm constantly thinking, cops, if you ever watch where cops sit at a restaurant or a bar or anything like that, my back's never to an entryway, it's always looking out, I can always tell you where my entrances and exits are, it's just kinda weird like that. And that's something that emergency management, you should also kinda be looking at, so if you're ever gonna play a role in that, you should always kinda have in the back of your mind, okay, where's the EOC? This is technically the EOC. And then also you should be thinking, okay, what if the tornado hit right here? Now what are we gonna do? Well, the back of the EOC, community center, okay, what if both of them are destroyed? Well, now we're gonna get to a county level and we're gonna deal with the county.
Are you embarrassed to be there?
Hopefully. I just figured we'd have a couple of jobs.
Sure.
Wherever the cold beer and water's flowing, as far as I'm concerned, so. So that brings up to the EOC stuff. A lot of these, the command post is gonna basically be wherever your incident commander is. So starting out, it's gonna be wherever me or Matt might be. If we're out on the scene and we're like, okay, we need to start things rolling, it might start there. And then as we get more people involved, we're gonna be like, okay, we need to go open up an inside building and start planning and writing things down, and then we're gonna come here. May not be me or Matt that come here, but there'll be a representative, again, this is where unified command comes into play. From there, you go to the local station area backup, from there you go to the county. The county EOC is actually in the government center right now. If that were to be destroyed or not able to be backed up, then it goes to the law enforcement center. The backup after that isn't in place yet, but it will be out in our shooting range, at which point the government center will be there anyway, so. And then from there, it goes to the state, which is down in St. Paul, and then they have a backup, which is, I wanna say it's Duluth. I'm pretty sure it's Duluth is where their backup is. And then from there, it goes to Wisconsin. So there's a backup to a backup to a backup, there's always backups. So that's kinda what things would sort of look like if we ever actually had to activate an EOC. It could very well be just a small little two-table thing, or it could be, we outgrow this space very quickly and have to go to the community center. The reason why this was kinda picked is because it has all of the records for the city, it has the computer access for the city, and all those types of resources. Again, that's stuff that we can deal with later if we have to, but in perfect world situation, we wanna have access to all of that kinda stuff that might happen, so. Another thing that goes along with that that we have to discuss for a while is the backup generator four here. We still have access to one of the generators to plug in here if we need it to, right? Just have to make it work type thing.
It's all wired for you.
Yeah, we have one that plugs in.
Plugging holes. So that's kind of already taken care of and stuff. We have a backup for the community center fire station. A lot of times when you're dealing with backup generators and stuff like that, a lot of your amenities go away however, so like, we don't power the air conditioner over at the community center and stuff. That's an amenity, we can open up doors, put fans on and stuff, but we don't need air conditioning at that point. Me either. But now, this got brought up when we had that gas outage, a lot of good this does is we have gas heat. You're correct, we do have gas heat, so we're still screwed as far as getting cold, but you can start getting some portable space heaters, things like that to try and take the edge off. And then a lot of the cold weather emergencies, a lot of it's just getting out of the wind, staying out of the wind, keeping doors shut and things like that, so.
Get enough people in a room and warms up.
It'll warm very, very quickly, so. As things sit right now, the things that scare us the most as far as emergency management goes, storms, they're always unpredictable, however, if you look at storm patterns, it always bears great bias, except for winter storms, which hit us square on. I know. So storms are always something that's in the back of our mind. The gas power outages, those happen. As we've seen in recent past, there's nothing we can do about them, and you just kinda have to think about, okay, now what? The thing that scares me the most is Highway twelve, with all the semi trucks going back and forth, if something were to happen there, it's gonna cut off a big artery into our community, it's gonna be hard to get resources in and out. The train stuff, so a lot of people are like, well, if an incident happens here, Montrose with a train spill and stuff, I can tell you right now, Montrose isn't gonna be in charge. It's kinda set up where if something happens here, our fire department, if there's a big explosion, our fire department's gonna be blown away and half the fire guys aren't gonna be able to get over here and stuff like that, so it's kind of just assume that if something like that happens, we're getting mutual aid right away. And they might actually be in charge because we're not gonna be able to get here and things like that. So that's just something that kinda works itself out as things progress. And then the one thing that scares me the most is some kind of an active threat incident, whether it's at carpentry contractors, craft pattern and mold school, things like that, because there's a lot of moving pieces that nobody really knows exactly how they're gonna work until they actually happen, and then they get worked out from there. Fortunately, it's something that we don't train on very much because we don't wanna train on it very much, because we don't wanna think it's gonna happen in our community. But always something that you wanna think about, okay, what if there's an active shooter at that school one day? What the heck's gonna start happening? What's my role gonna be? Wayne and his guys are gonna have a very important role, they're gonna be parking dump trucks on roads and making sure people don't come in. Fire department's gonna have their roles, law enforcement obviously is gonna have their roles. But it's always kinda interesting to think about things like that because, yes, we're a small community, yes, that likely will never happen here, but potential exists. Same thing with here at City Hall, potential exists that an active threat issue could happen. We pray that won't happen, but it potentially could. And always thinking about how, how, how is our response gonna look, what is, what are we gonna have to do? And things get very messy very quickly, you know, because you get a lot of people involved very quickly, and accountability kinda goes out the wayside because we need to deal with what's going on, so. Any questions? I kinda went through that kinda lickety-split, but I think that's kinda what we needed just to start out with, was just kind of a overall umbrella type thing of, just kinda get your minds thinking about different things, and I know a lot of the class stuff is very dry and very boring and blah, but it gives you the fundamentals and the baseline, whereas if I started saying unified command, this, that, and the other, you'd be like, then I'd have to sit here and explain unified command for two hours trying to explain to each one of you how that would work. So FEMA does a pretty good job with those. There's probably about four thousand other classes that you can take on there if you so, or so desire to. Most of them are even drier than these. I have about sixty of them done at this point. I'm continually doing more and more of them, but some of it has good information, but you gotta weed through the stuff that's like, has no bearing on me whatsoever, so.
Well, I think you gave us very good information, thank you. Before you leave, can you do me a favor and make a copy of both of those for when I do my minutes?
Sure.
Your notes and put them on my chair in my office? Thank you, I appreciate it.
I can do that. If you need help reading my chicken scratch, I'll probably be in tomorrow for a little bit, so.
Don't worry, I'll get you if you need help. So thank you.
And to the economic development authority report.
Yeah, you know, Deb and I have been working with Shannon Sweeney from David Jerome, and we've come to the conclusion that basically we need to restructure, revamp the entire economic development authority membership and go from five council members to two council members and three business owners. If we leave it at the council, we have a tendency to kinda continue to drink our own bathwater and nothing gets done, you know? So we're, like I said, we're looking at five commissioners, and at some point in time if we grow, we can bump it to seven, but at this point in time, I think five is pretty adequate. We also need to update the governing resolution for the EDA. Just to kinda refresh it, I mean, things are, so last one was done back in...
Nineteen something.
Nineteen ninety-one or ninety-three years ago.
Yes.
So we need to redo that, and that's gonna require a public hearing to discuss any proposed modifications. Now, we talked about an initial work plan too, once we get reorganized and I can take an official document out, or go and talk to business owners with an official document backing me up from a resolution standpoint, just start talking about business retention, going out and visiting business owners in town, talking about, you know, what makes you happy being here in Montrose, what, you know, you lose sleep that night over, that kinda thing. So we get some interaction between the EDA and the local business people, okay? That way we can, you know, if we don't know what the problems are, we can help them solve them, so at least that way we get, we get problems underboard. We're looking at the EDA, members of the EDA getting some formal education in terms of, you know, federal grants and TIF money and TAF money and all the other acronyms that we have for gaining financing for potential businesses coming, coming into town. And then, you know, we, there are a lot of tools we can use in terms of attracting business. I'm, I'm gonna be meeting up with Brian Kozlowski at the Wright Technical Center to see exactly how we can dovetail with his organization in terms of training students that are going into carpentry or welding or electrical, you know, type of thing. So maybe we can attract some business with a potential apprenticeship type program, pay them a lower scale, get them in as an apprenticeship to go to school, you know, this kinda thing. And then, well, really, I think right now, our, our next thing to do is really have our public hearing get that scheduled, have a public hearing to discuss the changes we wanna make to this thing.
Do you have an outline already in place of what that document's gonna look like of, other than just this?
No, we have, I made, I scratched some changes into, into the old document. You know, a lot of that, talk about pay for the members and stuff like that, needless to say, the council, council members that are on that EDA would not get paid anything above and beyond their monthly pay. The business, we're still talking about just treating them just like any other people that are on commissions, twenty-five dollars a meeting kinda thing, so that's, that's really where we're at. And there's a lot of subterfuge in that document that really doesn't pertain to where we're at today, so. We're kinda looking at, once we get, you know, once we get the public hearing done, talk about the changes we'd like to make, Shannon has, you know, agreed to help us pull that resolution together so it makes sense and all that, so.
Would it be possible to have that resolution ready before that public hearing as, and then we go over it, and then if it's agreed upon, then we can...
You can go over it at the public hearing.
Right, yeah, yeah, right.
I would see why not.
Because, and I, I just made a note, I'll contact Shannon tomorrow because I have to have it to the paper by ten o'clock, 'cause that way we could have it ready for the next city council meeting.
Okay.
So I'll see if he has something available for me, or if he thinks that's a good timeline.
Yeah, 'cause you know, you already communicated with him about we agree with everything he's documented, it's a good reflection of what we talked about, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and see if they get here.
I think it'd be good, I think with a new revamped system, we could actually get people that would wanna come in and stay on it for a while. I mean, there's several businesses in town that have been here for a while and will stay here for...
Yeah.
A long time, so.
So is that what you would like to do then? Get ahold of Shannon and proceed with having something at the next city council meeting?
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Anything'll be improvement over what we got.
Yeah, anything's better than what we have, right? Yeah, like I said a long time ago, I'm anxious to get this rolling, and I know there are, you know, Shannon said, well, we're probably gonna have monthly meetings for the first year because it's, you know, we're gonna have some growing pains getting things rolling again, it's like, well, I'm like a racehorse in the thing wanting to go, but I understand how things work, you know, so.
Got a crowd for you, you know?
Well, and I think Tom will attest to the fact that we're lucky to have Shannon on board helping with us because there isn't a thing he doesn't really know about.
He's got the wealth of knowledge, I mean, pretty much any question we've asked, he's had an answer for.
Right, and he's worked in communities of all sizes, so that helps, so he knows what will work and what doesn't.
Yep.
Engineering, or, yeah, engineering discussion, is anybody gonna talk about?
You, the city council had asked to put this on the agenda, there were some questions by some of the city council members, our, our expenses for the new engineering firm are higher than what we had for the old engineering firm. I know city staff wanted to talk a little bit about, sorry, tickle my throat. We wanted to talk a little bit about how they're getting back to us, basically, I don't know how else to say it. It's, in my time here, it's been interesting to me because just, I just had something, for instance, where I contacted Sean from Wink, and I contacted him Monday through Wednesday, he'd get back to me, and I told Wayne, and Wayne finally contacted him, and he got back to him right away. And so, and we've had incidents like that before. Now, Justin, for example, I contacted him one time with a question before the city council meeting. We started at seven o'clock and I was still here at city hall, I contacted him at like six o'clock, and by six oh five, he had all the answers typed out to be in email. That's the kinda response.
We send out, we send out our billing permits, so when we get a new billing permit for a, our GED building permit for a new house, before we will issue that permit, we always send the site certificates or the certificate of surveys to the engineer to review them to make sure that nothing has changed since, because all the developments now are older developments and there's different builders building in those developments than what was originally set, we make sure that the house they're putting on there is the correct house for that lot, to make sure that nothing has changed like in grade and stuff. And I know Jess sent him some, and it was almost a two-week turnaround before we got them back, and then he had missed four of them, she had to get back in touch with them because the builders were waiting for their billing permits. So, and I was watching our, we charge a fee on the permit for the engineering reviews, and we used to charge seventy dollars, and we just upped it from seventy to a hundred and twenty-five because the seventy was not covering our expenses at all. I mean, we were gonna go in the hole, so we upped it on the permit, so. I don't know if, I mean, I know they do charge more per hour than what Boltman-Mink did, but I don't know why it takes so long for them to review them. I mean, I have some here that, Sean doesn't put on here how many... I mean, I have some here that, Sean doesn't put on here how many he's reviewing, but this one alone, this bill was from just this past June, and he just has on here billing permit reviews for Whitetail and Forest Creek, and he's got it listed on here for three different days. This was like back in May, I got the bill in June, and his bill was six hundred and seventy dollars versus, I looked at this one and Justin did eleven of them when we were still using Boltman Mink, and his was three hundred to do eleven of them. So, there's a pretty good size difference, along with the fact of the timing. It seems to be taking a long time to get the stuff back, so. I don't know what he's, if he's just that busy, if he's giving up to somebody else.
Do you think that's potential because there's, there's so much of a smaller firm and they don't have the resources that Boltman and Mink have?
I think that's part of it.
I think, plus their forte is really environmental engineering, and I think anything that takes them out of that, you know, wheelhouse costs us money 'cause they're going through a learning curve.
Yeah, understood.
And one thing I will say, I've worked with Boltin and Mink in other communities, and that's one thing I will say, that if they don't, like, Justin doesn't have someone in his office that knows something, they have someone in another office that is an expert in whatever part of engineering you want to deal with. And I don't know if you heard us talking before the meeting, but we had, you two know the story better, but we had something that came up the other day, and they called Justin, and he kinda knew even off the top of his head what it was. I don't know what the issue was.
I had, I had somebody on Garfield call me and told me that since the new project that we did on Garfield a year ago, they've been having standing water in their front yard and they've never had it before. So, I had Justin on the phone. I said, "By the way," 'cause he had called me about something with the wheelhouse, and I said, "By the way, I was just making a hole for you. I've got somebody complaining over on Garfield." And he said, I told him where it was. I said, "It's not, it's the very first house," and I said, "Then there's the next house after that." And he goes, "I'm almost sure there's a catch basin in there. I'll double check when I get back to the office, but I'm almost sure there is." And he said, "I bet you anything they didn't catch, they didn't pull the blocking around it. They would still have the silt blocking around it, so it's holding back the water." So, he said, "The construction company must not have pulled it." So, Wayne went out and looked and sure enough, they hadn't pulled it, so. Our turnaround with him is a lot quicker than Sean, by far.
Times money.
Well, and the other thing is, is they know, he, he also knows the town. I mean, he's been here from, for quite a while, so he knows the town. I think that helps too. He just knew off the top of his head. Whereas Sean seems to have to, like, when they do these permit reviews and grading and stuff, they have to send somebody out to literally look at it because they don't know what we're talking about. Whereas what Justin used to do, he'd just go, he'd pull the plan that they have in their office, look at it and go, "Yep," you know, 'cause he knew exactly what we were talking about. So, kinda makes a difference in that area too. So, I'm sure that's why the more expensive of Wink is 'cause they literally send somebody out.
And just some information for you when you're thinking about this or discussing this. I did talk to Justin. I know Mayor Otto also talked to Boltin and Mink at the last conference that she was at, and they will be, they would be willing to come back in our community. They don't want to have to do RFPs, and I understand that because it's a costly project, and he just did it. He just did that, so you have recent RFPs. But, I, just something to think about because there's, there's a huge difference. I'm going to say that. There is a huge difference.
Sure. What is the contract definitely?
Do we have a signed contract? I don't know that we did a contract.
I looked through minutes and I didn't see anything, so.
I don't know that you did a contract, did you?
I, I don't remember.
I don't remember if we did a contract. I think it was...
Well, yeah, maybe just a verbal agreement.
Yeah, like, like gentleman, like gentleman's agreement.
Yeah, that's why they... Yeah, with that increase, you know, that had to be something.
But, but I don't think, I don't think there was a time.
I don't think there was a, per se, a signed contract of any way. I think in their RFP, they had what their rates were year one. At a certain time, their rates were going up. I think that was in their RFP, but I don't recall actually having a contract.
I'll, I'll check. No, I didn't check on that, and I'll tell you why. Because I didn't know what you guys were gonna decide to do, and I didn't want to say to Wink, "Uh, we have a contract with you," and then they would start asking questions. So, I can check on that, but I can tell you that I looked through minutes and I did not see anything regarding the contract, so.
I don't recall a contract, but that would have been, when, when did we hire them?
I think it's about two years ago.
Yeah, it was shortly after I got on.
The second term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, 'cause it was when Dale was here.
Yeah, Dale was here, yeah.
So.
So.
Eighty years ago, spring.
Is that what it was?
I was gonna say, it was just like in 2018, wasn't it?
Nope.
February or March or something, maybe?
I think it was just before I came on in May.
Well, you know, like with any other engineering firm, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that they're charging us appropriately and not charging us for things that are non-essential and stuff like that. So, you know, any engineering company we have, we need to write her that. So, you know, I know the problems, I heard a lot of the problems with Boltin and Mink were, you know, not responsive. They were milking, you know, projects and stuff like that. So, like I said, it's our responsibility to make sure that that doesn't happen. But, having said that, I don't think that the city should be paying more money than necessary for an engineering company, you know, like we are now.
For them to cut their teeth on our...
Exactly, yeah.
On our projects. Are there other engineering companies around too that we can get quotes from or however that works out?
There was one from St. Cloud. I can't remember the name, but no.
Balltech.
You, you can...
And they, they were pretty good too. They had a good reference, 'cause I checked that out.
I honestly couldn't tell you.
We just, we're gonna have a lot of projects on the next, you know, two to ten years, so.
They do take their time getting back to us about any of them. I'm working with the sludge, that stuff with Kunal.
Yeah.
Talking about Wayne.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you that if you do RFPs, Boltin and Mink won't. They won't, because it's costly for them to do, and they just did one. And the other thing with that is, is that if you can do that, but if you decide to go with another firm, then you have your learning curve that you're paying for again. But, that's totally, that's just information, food for thought, you guys.
And I've worked at Buffalo for years before I came here. You might have somebody that can help you, so.
Yeah, they have so many, they have a number of different offices. And also, I think the advantage of that is, is that we've had them, they were our engineers since like two thousand and one, I believe we started with them, and that's when all the developments started here. So, they have been around since all of the different developments have been around. So, they know everything, you know. Wayne can call them a lot of times and ask them about a water shut-off or a curb stop or a manhole somewhere, and they have the time to tell you where it is because they've been involved in most of this stuff.
So, they don't have to send someone else that we're paying for?
Yeah.
They can just tell them on the phone.
I mean, that is one advantage of it.
Yep, and Boltin and Mink also, from my standpoint, when we had that gas outage, Sean had made a call to Justin, and we had Buffalo Community Middle School open within an hour because he had contacts up in Buffalo and everything, so. They have that with a lot of neighboring cities too. I'm not sure who Wink called provides for it or period.
Wink is the engineer Delano. Other than that, I don't know where else they are. Boltin and Mink is at Buffalo, Waverly, Howard Lake.
Winston.
Winston. Coquato? Yeah, I don't know all of them, but I don't know who, I don't know where else Wink is.
Well, and I can tell you this, when you say that you heard that people said that they milked the community, I went to the history dinner over at Waverly when they just had their one hundred and fiftieth and a bunch of the food, and the wine and stuff was, because their engineering, Waverly was funded by Boltin and Mink. They gave back to the community. And someone from the community was telling me that they do that quite often, and I know they do that in communities where they work.
They still here for Montrose Days. They just give us a donation. You just have to ask them.
Now, because it's like in the sewer down there, they pay for all the fireworks.
Boltin and Mink did?
Yeah.
They gave us, there's been...
They gave us pretty much.
Well, the Montrose Days has to ask, and I don't think they even ask anymore. When I was on Montrose Days, we used to always ask, and there was years we got a couple thousand dollars from them.
Yeah, you have to ask or you won't, yeah.
You gotta fill out the paperwork and stuff like that for community engagement and stuff. Yeah, 'cause they just, they just need the documentation for the, for the tax purposes.
Sure.
Well, and one of the other problems was itemized statements for...
They change their statements though when they've been itemized. The last one we had...
I know they lost a couple of cities because they wouldn't, they just sent them a bill of engineering, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Well, they used to... Theirs are actually more itemized than what Wink's are. 'Cause like on this one...
Well, maybe now, maybe they changed it.
Yeah, they, they did. After we asked them to break it down more, they did. They started breaking it down a lot more.
I mean, I know with doing my job as estimating, I have one company that wants everything together in one line item, and I want, and then I have other companies that want everything broken out separately because, because depending upon where money comes from. So, I know different places like things laid out differently because they, it flows through their systems easier. So, you know, and most of the time, like, like with my estimating portion of it, the company calls me up and says, "Hey, can you break this? I'll break that out," you know, and then, so, I mean, I know there are different ways of doing those things, and, you know, most of the time what they do is you just have to ask them and talk to them, and they'll accommodate you. I mean, they should.
Yeah, they did. They probably don't.
Well, I think we need to have this conversation, also meeting that.
Okay.
As well as our attorneys, but I know that's not yet on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay, the purchased property, we moved back. Okay, US Highway twelve improvement discussion.
No, we switched to H. O.
H. to park camper.
H. Yeah, okay, okay, request a parked camper. Six oh one Nelson Boulevard. Where is six?
Dollar General.
No, that's Emery's. So, what happened is we have a resident cousin, Hills, who had a fire at his home. It's been quite a lengthy process for him to get back into his home, and he currently is leasing a property, but the property, they have to be out August fifteenth. And so, he talked to Justin Emery at Emery Trucking, and he will allow him to park his camper behind his building, hook in to electricity and water. From about August, he said to be safe when I'm talking, he would just say August sixteenth to September sixteenth, but he's pretty sure that's only gonna be a couple of weeks.
It'll be done by September.
Yep, so he's thinking at the beginning of September. So, I brought it to you. I told him I had to bring it to you. If you're in agreement with him doing something like that, I just need a motion for you to approve that.
Yeah, what about sewage? He should have to dump his tank.
Yeah, he's just gonna have to go dump his tank somewhere.
Do we have a tank?
No.
No, he'd have to go to Coquato. We go to Coquato, we go to Baker Park.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for, to allow him to park a camper behind Emery's nine oh one Nelson Boulevard, four up to...
From, from August sixteenth to September sixteenth. Okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four. Now, we'll get back to the Highway twelve improvement discussion.
I put that on there. Council member Keel had asked to put that on there because it's, it's quite costly, as you can see from the documentation I gave you, to make some of those changes, and then Wendy has some information to interject too. So, it's just on there for discussion. I think the big thing is, is that we need to know because we have to, we have to put the streetscape committee on the right path so that they know what they can and can't do. And that directive should come from the city council.
But is that strictly just for the Highway twelve or is that for the whole city? I thought we kinda changed it so they...
Well, this is just for the Highway twelve improvement project in the year twenty twenty-two. The changes they wanna make there, so it's not for anything...
When the, when the state comes through and redoes the highway, they wanna do all this.
So, there's a couple of things they've been talking about. One was, which we had talked about once before, was widening, putting like a boulevard between the, well, we talked about putting a boulevard, so it'd be like the sidewalk and then a boulevard and then the street, to kinda make it, the sidewalk set back a little bit more instead of right on the road. So, they talked about that, and the other thing they talked about was putting, what do you call it, down the middle of the road, like the trees and stuff in the middle of the road?
Median.
So, Minda has said that we can do both.
Well, they said you can't do the, there's not enough area to do the median.
The road is too narrow.
Well, no, they said we could do the median, but it would, what did she say? You could do the median because they would look at equiring property to turn the corners.
Yep. But she was concerned because there isn't really a property to acquire.
Right, and the other part of that is, is, the other thing they need to think about, and I don't think anybody on Highway twelve media has thought about this, is the people that live on that road. Because, you know, if you're John Varner and you live on the highway, now every time you wanna go the east, you have to go to the west. If you're...
Well, it's every, and the first one we had, I'm pretty sure I brought that up too, but it's, it wouldn't make sense because you, there's no, there's a driveway or a business, like every thirty feet.
We would have a lot of complaining, I think, if we did that. And the other part about it is, you know, it would really be nice to be able to move the sidewalk right off of Highway twelve and put a boulevard in there, like a little grassy area. However, you have to look at some of those places because there, again, the Varners, it's awful close to their house already.
You're talking, it's more property to purchase.
The Osgood Bar is right on their front step almost.
There's not a chance you can get it done on the other side of the road.
No, Jack Robrowski's house, his fence and his front door are right at the sidewalk.
This one, this side of the road, maybe if you buy property, but there's not a chance on the other side.
It's even close, the, the one from Minda thought that even old fat guys is too close to...
Yeah.
Yeah, and the front door.
So, I think that's, I don't know if you guys need to give them a little bit of direction that they, you know, yes, it's nice to think about that because you're trying to improve the looks of Montrose, but I don't think it's possible, along with the cost of having to relocate everything. 'Cause they have to relocate all the lights, they have to relocate all the fire hydrants.
And all that.
This was all just for this road right here.
It was just from, actually from Coney Road twelve to Center Avenue, this to move the lights and stuff.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, you know, I don't think that's, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of property to buy. There's, I mean, not just the moving property, but then with the businesses' front doors, I mean, you, let's see if this is good.
The bottom, the bottom line is what do we gain from this? You know, we gain very little.
A buffer between the road and the sidewalk.
Do you think that, as we sit here talking, I'm just thinking out loud right now, but I, I'm listening to you and I'm thinking that maybe when we have our next workshop, that we have a joint and have the streetscape committee come so that we can discuss this?
It would have to be later, otherwise we're only gonna...
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, that's what we'll have to do. Like when we had that parking wreck, we did have, well, we have Sylvia here.
Or just have your streetscape committee and have whoever from the council can come do it.
Yeah, 'cause that's at five thirty before the planning, or five o'clock before the planning and commissioning.
So, maybe whoever can make it could just go to that.
We should find out who can make it first, 'cause there's key ones there.
I'll send an email out, because we have one August twenty-first, because they have to redo the new drawings for...
Yeah, by five o'clock.
At five o'clock, yes. Okay, so why don't you guys all check your calendars and let me know? Okay?
So, none of this included the stuff for the Zephyr that I saw in here? They're down there by Mill Pond and...
It's a turn lane.
Oh, brothers.
Yeah.
Was that all part of that discussion too?
I'm gonna, Minda was gonna do that anyway, when they redo the...
Oh, here, it tells you right here, rotation. So, you have to replace two hydrants from Arizona to Buffalo, Buffalo to Center, Center to Emerson, and Emerson to Garfield. The lights, it talks about how many you have to replace.
So, this was all included, was this from Zephyr then, all the way down?
Kirby's got here some of the turn lane, I think.
Well, yeah, 'cause they're just, it's all on your back-to-back. That's why I was curious if they, so.
No, I think it's Arizona, Arizona to Garfield. They wanna add a boulevard.
All the way down?
Yep.
Well, I mean, just the turn lane and stuff like that, I, I think we definitely need the turn.
They're doing that. That's, they're, they're doing that.
Yeah, 'cause we need that from Arizona to Hunter's.
Yep, they're doing that.
It'd be nice to just keep that.
And they are going to look into widening Highway twenty-five south at the intersection if they can buy some of the property on the corner by that, and, because they've already looked at relocating the box for the lights and some of that because it's...
There's really not much room there with the buildings there.
No, but they, but...
Sidewalk is still gonna have sidewalks.
But they were looking at, they were looking at the one, like buying, buying some property from the guy that has the cars.
Yeah.
So that they can do something with that.
But those sidewalks, they're right on the edge of the road now.
But the sidewalks are right on the edge of the road now.
They would, well, they'd move it with, they'd move the sidewalk with the road, yeah. Yeah, but they're looking at doing that because the semis can't make that curve.
No, they can't now.
Or they're, if they're going east and they need to turn south onto 25, they can't make that curve.
This is to add a boulevard from Arizona only to...
Which we really don't need to do because we have the walking trail that goes down so far.
So I'll, I'll look into it.
Maybe it's a great idea, but it's a problem that they should have thought about 100 years ago when they were putting everything through town. Yeah, I know, we can't, well, let's blame them then.
You're still here.
Minda would love it.
Yeah, I just, the, I'm glad that they're looking at the, the turn lane and stuff like that, and but, but the boulevard just, and I don't even know if that's completely, that's just for the relocation and the putting stuff down, right? This doesn't include purchasing all the property and... So I mean, you're talking on top of whatever this is, it's, yeah, I don't, as, as nice as it would, as it would look.
I don't know if you have to purchase any property because I think it's in the right of way. I don't think there is need to purchase any property, but in some areas, it just depends on, the right of way changes on Highway 12 considerably by each property.
It's just that it's not gonna, I'll be honest, be feasible in some of those properties because you're right there.
Yeah. Well, and they, I don't know if anybody ever was down to Wayzata, but they, they have a boulevard through part of Wayzata down there, and it is, there is a lot of, you see people come out, then they go down, they turn around, whip a U-turn, then they go back the other direction because you can't get out. So...
Or you just go to St. Cloud. St. Cloud is built.
No, I don't like going to St. Cloud.
Tower of the Gens.
It'd look nice, but I just, I don't thi, I don't think it's feasible.
I think we'll talk about two things at the joint meeting if it works for all of you. We'll talk about boulevard, and then they also want to, um, they're going to evaluate the current plantings that are there. So... We wanna, we wanna talk about that because our public groups guys, all of them, at the same time, spend quite a bit of time out, out there going through there and pulling weeds and, and beautifying them up. And so, um, they want little to no plantings or plantings that don't really work.
Yeah, I mean, the, the plantings look nice. They're great, but upkeep and, you know, and, and think, you know, the time that you guys are spending doing that, what could you be doing that's more productive and a better, better use of...
And they'll go, "What are these? Are those weeds or those plants?" You don't know.
So we'll talk about that too because they've been talking about that in detail.
You almost have to hire a part-time person.
Simple flowers, it'd be one thing, but I'm sure there's not simple flowers.
Well, you need, you need to hire somebody, a part-time person that knows the difference between weed and a flower.
Yeah.
And have them work a couple of flowers every week.
Simple flowers.
My friend says if you can't mow it or whip, weed whip it, you don't need it.
You don't need it there.
I like that.
Okay, are we done with the Highway 12 then?
Yes.
Okay, planning and zoning commission?
You had Catherine Nyberg apply to be on the planning zoning. Her education was in the packet for you to consider. Do you have any questions?
Well, I wish she was here to ask the question, but I just, she, she quit not that long ago, right? You were on the...
Well, she, she didn't quit. Well, she quit because her sister is down in Texas and was on her last days. So she was the only family member that was available to go down there. And she did leave that then, you know, but she kinda thought when she comes back, she could just get on, but that means that you can't be reinstated, I guess, because nobody else was able to do that, so now she had to fill out another application. So that, that was the main reason, but she was really, she really knows her stuff. She's really educated with city business and stuff.
And then you're, then you're sitting in need of a number and you have no tie-breaking votes.
Well, and I'm, I'm gonna be brave about my concerns with it. My concern with it is, as you know, you're continually getting emails from her on the exact same thing. She sent some out again today on the, on the exact two emails that I responded to last week and told her what was happening with all of that. It's to the point where I, I do, I feel harassed by her because it's just constant. And my concern is, is that are we gonna be able to conduct business that we need to conduct, or is it going to be a personal agenda for her? I don't know that for sure, but the way that it's going with the emails, I have some concerns about that.
But the emails are for the benefit of the city, not necessarily for itself. You know, she's concerned about, she's concerned about everything, but Hill Street really is bad. I don't know if any of you guys go past there, but there is a lot of stuff that's...
But we're dealing with it, is what I'm, I'm trying to say, and I've told her how we're dealing with it, but she continues, you all got the email again today. She continues to send those same emails that I've already answered. So...
Redundancy on them.
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, I think on all the commissions, we need people that are gonna approach things from a very positive standpoint instead of a negative standpoint. And my experience with Catherine has been pretty much negative, so...
So I don't know if it's something you want to vote on tonight, if you want to table it and bring it to a council meeting, but...
Let's table it for the council meeting.
The whole group, you have to all discuss and decide what you want to do.
Then she can be there. You can ask questions probably. Okay.
I'm ready to vote on it now.
It's up to you. You, you can do that. You can make a motion if you want.
I don't know. I don't, not really comfortable with it. I mean, Deb's got good points. It's just, when I, when my email wasn't working and all of a sudden I got it working again, and I had a month's worth of emails, there was five or six from her in there, just, and it was the same two or three things over and over again. And there was the reply from Deb about these are being done legally on this end for this and that, and... I don't know. I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with it. I mean, there's a difference between, going back to my original question, there's a difference between quitting and saying, "I need to take a leave of absence for a couple of months," so...
And, um, I did receive an email from the chair of the planning zoning commission, and she would not like to see Catherine as a member of the planning zoning commission.
I'll make a motion not to allow Catherine on the planning and zoning at this time.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And one no? Because I really feel she would be a, really a good thing for the city of Montrose.
Okay. Our next item on here is, um, the purchase of property. And just so you know, we have to close this meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Section 130.05, subdivision 3C, to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase of or sale of real or personal property. So I am going to need a motion to close that, and after that motion is made, um, you're gonna have to just not talk for a little bit because we do have to turn the camera off.
You have to give the PID number of the property that you are going to discuss.
The PID number of the property that we are going to discuss is... I promise we do have that. Oh, it's right here. Okay. It is 112-012-005051.
Thank a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then, um, you have to leave the room, Kevin, and we have to close the door.
See you later.